All right, let's call to order. Start with Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a fancy flag?
I'm gonna do a quick screen share and you are actually going to get...
Just angle your laptop to the flag in the corner, Joe.
There, you can see it right here.
There we go.
There you go.
All right, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag.
The United States of America.
And to the public.
Public, which it stands.
When we change under God.
Indivisible, who have liberty and justice for all.
That was pretty rough.
Kind of was.
Who practiced their pledge of allegiance.
That's why we need to be back in our school buildings. So with the kids, we can practice on a daily basis.
All right, this meeting was called to order at about two minutes after noon. Consistent with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, and Regulation 940 CMR 29.10, which allows for remote participation in certain circumstances under the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Regulations, the Mendon Upton Regional School Committee will be conducting this meeting remotely. In this particular case, the committee are participating remotely and virtually through video conferencing. This is consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 10, 2020, which eased the requirements of having a meeting in a physical space, open to the public, and having a quorum of the committee physically present. Any and all votes will be conducted by roll call votes. Per usual, the meeting will also be livestreamed and recorded. So, let's move on to getting a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I move that we approve today's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil DeSutter, aye.
Vicki Ludwigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
All right, very good. Then let's move on to presentation of the revised fiscal year 2021 operational budget.
Okay, thank you, Sean. You have in your school committee packet all of the documents that we typically have with regard to revenue and so on. What I'd like to be able to do, and this is very, very similar to what I presented the other night at the multi-board meeting, is just to kind of give a high-level overview of what you'll be considering as far as a recertification vote. So again, literally the week of the closure on March 9, at the usual annual budget hearing for the FY21 budget, you originally, as a committee, certified a budget of $38,961,000, which was a significant increase of over $2.5 million over the current fiscal year, roughly a 7% increase. What we're asking for consideration this afternoon is a budget that is pared down of $37,133,486, which is a little under 2% over this current fiscal year. It's an increase of $718,727. So as I say on that last line of the slide, this recertification is significantly less. It is for 1.8 million less than the amount that was originally certified. And what I'm going to cover is how we got to this number and what it reflects is both what we're projecting for savings for this current fiscal year with the crisis closure and also a lesser request than originally. So again, some of the areas of savings that we believe we're going to realize as a result of being out of school for approximately three months are things like supplies, some modest savings on heating, snow and ice removal, some our substitute lines, our maintenance overtime as a result of not having many, many evening and weekend events. We'll see some savings under workman's comp and unemployment and also athletic transportation because there will be no spring sports seasons at the middle school or high school. And then miscellaneous accounts of, again, it kind of relates to account lines, supply lines being frozen. And then probably our largest savings, which we estimate could be in the ballpark of $400,000 to a half a million dollars, will be what we're actively negotiating with regard to transportation, both regular transportation and also special ed transportation with our carriers. So as far as reductions in what we're looking at due to the crisis, the four positions, again, still very, very highly needed that were proposed in the original FY21 budget have been eliminated from this pared-down request. All of our supply lines, instructional materials and supplies are completely level funded. There will be no technology refresh under this plan. Again, we're anticipating that we will be able to save in regular transportation. Part of our negotiation points with our provider, Telstone and Sun, would be at a minimum to freeze our rate for FY21 at the FY20 rate. We're also probably looking at increasing our school choice appropriation based upon savings by approximately $200,000. We will be seeking to kind of keep things status quo with regard to salaries for all employees across the district to kind of reflect the crisis that we're in. And as I said before, in those previous two slides, we're looking to roll over savings from FY20 to offset our costs for FY21. So in the budget documents that you have before you, some of the assumptions are that our state funding would be level to FY20. And again, that could conceivably be a big assumption. I think there's a lot of variables right now with regard to some of the talk with regard to potentially being a Phase 4 stimulus coming out of the federal level, whether there will be assistance to individual states and cities to backfill their FY21 budgets. That's still a wild card, whether that will happen. But as I said last Thursday night, we're looking at the operational assessments to our two communities for Mendon to be $10,197,621 and Upton $12,223,378. As you can see, significant decreases in the operational assessments from what you certified back on March 9. And again, the reality is looking at the economic crisis that we're in right now and looking at the viability of significant override requests in both communities. I believe in Mendon, it was in the ballpark of about 1.4 million and in Mendon, conceivably a little under 1.1 million and the potential viability of such a request. So again, the mindset is to keep a level services budget that is keeping what we have at present time intact within the district. So what this essentially means, and again, this is in your packet, that the increase to Mendon would be $521,820 over the current assessment. And we've been informed by the town that $250,000 would be what they're planning on funding within the Prop 2.5 levy limit. And as a result, $271,820 would be the smaller override vote that would be put to the townspeople at both town meeting and an election. And for Upton, the increase is $502,261. And the indications from the town that $300,000 would be applied from the levy limit with an override vote of $200,000. So as a result, if looking, this question invariably comes up as far as the tax impact of an override. For an average home in both communities, which is in the ballpark of an assessed valuation of about $425,000. For Mendon, these pared-down override requests would equate to about $114,000... I'm sorry, $114.49 per year. And for Upton, $71.68 per year for a taxpayer that would have a home in that averaged assessed valuation range. So this is what you are considering as a committee this afternoon. I think with all of the uncertainty and some of the constraints that we're dealing with, this is the most prudent course of action moving forward. And I would recommend that we move forward with this strategy and particularly in light of the constraints that our two communities are dealing with at this current time as far as the time constraints to get a warrant up and running and to have the ballots printed in time for the deferred town elections in the month of June. So that's a quick summary of what is under consideration now for the committee.
So given that we've had a lot of discussion about this, both in our last committee meeting and also in the multi-board, we've had a lot of Q and A already. But does anybody have any Q and A from the school committee for the proposed budget? I don't think, I don't think we have any questions as a school committee. I think we've got...
I do have one question, actually, but it's not Joe. It might be to, I think, did I see, is Derek on? Or I see Paul there or Maureen. I guess my question is, will the selectmen in the town of Upton be discussing this approach tonight? Or from a standpoint of override, no override, how they might look at funding it? Because I know there are probably multiple different ways and I'm just wondering when that might be discussed.
I believe that is going to be...
Go ahead, Maureen.
Well, I believe that is going to be discussed tonight.
Okay.
If I may, Maureen, I don't want to undercut you, but I think they took that off the agenda. It's going to be tomorrow night with the finance committee.
Thursday night with the finance committee.
That's what I meant.
All righty.
Okay.
Sorry, Maureen, you're not in the loop, I guess, you know?
Well, I guess not.
It's all good. It's been a good time, thank you. And I don't know if there'll be any further discussion of this in Mendon, which would be great to know if people want to listen in as well.
Phil, Mendon is holding their meeting to vote this amount at 12:30 today because it has to be done by today so that they can... Because they're still planning on holding their election June 9 and it has to be 35 days ahead of that.
Got it. Okay.
So they had the information and they know what they're voting already, assuming that we vote.
All right, so let's move on then. If there are no more questions, let's move on to recertification. So, Phil, can you read out the motions for recertification of the budget, please?
I can. Okay. I make a motion to set the operational budget for the Mendon-Upton Regional School District for the 2020-2021 fiscal year at $37,133,486 that consists of general operations within the levy limit of $36,311,348 and the debt service outside of the levy limit of $822,138.
And voting on this is, I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Thanks, Vicki. Voting on this is by roll call. Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil DeSutter, aye.
Vicki Ludwigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously with a quorum, I should say. Motion two.
I make a motion to assess the town of Mendon $10,600,884 that consists of the following. Minimum local contribution, $7,725,850. Non-discretionary charges, $894,700. Discretionary charges, $1,577,071. Long-term debt, Clough Memorial School, $334,878. Long-term debt, Misco Green Repair, $68,385.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil DeSutter, aye.
Vicki Ludwigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Okay, that passes with a quorum. Motion number three.
I make a motion to assess the town of Upton $12,642,253 that consists of the following. Minimum local contribution, $9,124,333. Non-discretionary charges, $1,121,752. Discretionary charges, $1,977,293. Long-term debt, Clough Memorial School, $334,872. And long-term debt, Misco Green Repair, $84,003.
Second.
Roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil DeSutter, aye.
Vicki Ludwigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Okay, passes with a quorum. Motion number four.
I make a motion to appropriate $13,725,374 from state aid that consists of the following. Chapter 70 funds, $12,488,756. Regional transportation reimbursement, $1,145,848. Charter school tuition reimbursement, $45,745.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil DeSutter, aye.
Vicki Ludwigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Okay, it passes with a quorum. Motion number five.
I make a motion to appropriate $250,000 from the following school district sources. Vision sped tuition, $75,000. Transfer in from revolving accounts, $150,000. Medicaid reimbursement, $25,000.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil DeSutter, aye.
Vicki Ludwigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Okay, very good. That passes with a quorum as well. So we are recertified. The next on the agenda is for community comments. Again, if you have a comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I see that we have one already from Shelley Cook. Just unmute yourself, Shelley, and go ahead and ask.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if or where this would be posted and if it would be possible to go through line item subtotals for where the modifications have been made.
I can answer that question. Shelley, if you go to the Mendon-Upton website and under Subcommittee, I'm sorry, under School Committee, there is a page called Budget and Finance. And this afternoon, all of the documents that have been shared with the school committee will be posted there, including a line item budget.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, any other questions?
Sean?
Yep, go ahead, Paul.
This money, the carryover from the current year, the savings from this year, that's getting rolled in to this budget that we just saw. Now, does that become in addition to what you just voted?
No, right? Jay, you want to clarify that?
No, that just means that we're going to have money left over for this year that's going to be in the school choice account and we're appropriating it out of school choice next year. So the budget you just see is what the budget is.
All right, all right. So that's not going to affect cause of deficiency or anything next year before we even get going then, no?
No.
All right.
Okay, any other questions?
Maureen, you got one.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I was wondering why wouldn't it create a deficiency if you are rolling extra funds from this year to the budget next year? How are you going to get to that level fund next year without being able to roll money forward?
Well, so when it comes to the end of the year and we have money left over, it stays in whatever account. In this case, school choice, it's going to stay in the school choice account and we're going to use that as a revenue source next year. So school choice is not part of the operational budget. So the way we do this is we basically transfer expenses from a line item in the budget into the school choice account. Typically, it's the four lines that are for teachers' classroom salaries. And if you look at the line item budget, you'll see an amount there that's been reduced already by the school choice appropriation.
And you would use that towards next year's budget?
Yes.
You have a rough idea how much that would be?
About $680,000 is what we're hoping for.
Okay.
Paul's got a finger up.
Yeah, I got another question. There was discussion when we did this, what, last week at the multi-board meeting? And there's some confusion, at least in my mind. My recollection is that Joe was saying, well, there probably wouldn't be an override next year. And I got the impression that Jay said there will be an override next year or most likely be an override next year. So can you clarify that just a little bit to see what we're doing? I mean, we're going to have this huge override this year. We didn't have it. I don't, I don't see how you can make the point that you don't need one next year. If you say we don't need one next year, well, we didn't need one this year either. So where do we go with this?
First of all, I never said, I never said, I didn't contradict Jay last Thursday night. I said, at this point, I can't give you a definitive answer for the second...
No, I...
Now, we, we don't know where the economy is...
I wasn't clear on it, so...
Okay. I think the fact remains that what we've put together here for a recertified budget takes into account extraordinary circumstances and extraordinary circumstances and pressures to the economy. We may be unfortunately in the same position a year from now, depending upon that the rate of what exactly the recovery is going to be. Do I think that the, everything that we've talked about prior to this crisis as far as the additional onus being on our two communities still being present, are they still going to be present? Absolutely. Do we still want to move forward on the vision of our strategic plan? Absolutely. Are we still going to have additional stressors with regard to special services for students who receive special education services? All of those pieces are not going to go away. So I think Jay's response is, yeah, those, those needs and that additional funding definitely is in the milieu of an override request. And can I see that in the foreseeable future? I can, but I think we also have to be realistic. And what, what the school committee and the school district are doing here in good faith is a recognition of this crisis and what this crisis is going to do within our communities. So I guess that's, hopefully, that adds a little clarity to what the mindset is right now.
I don't, Joe, I don't disagree with anything you say. And what I, what I see out there, though, is the, the certain group of naysayers that, you know, perceive everything in a negative light and they're going to say, oh, they needed an override, they didn't get it, but they still get by. So I'm just asking, you know, I'm just saying, you, you be able to make an adequate presentation or defense just like you did now to explain, you know, why everything's falling in place as it is? That's, that was my point.
And again, I believe you and I had this conversation last week, Paul, that it really is a very simple calculus. The simple calculus is that it's a reduced request recognizing the gravity of this crisis, but that reduced request represents certain things out of the budget that were originally in the budget. It also represents sacrifice by many different stakeholders, specifically our employees in the district. But it also represents some of the savings that we're realizing by literally having our operations shut down for a third of the school year. It's that simple. You know, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, Paul.
Yeah, but it's, like I say, there's this, the certain amount of naysayers out there that no matter what you say, that they're not going to buy it, buy the story anyway.
Well, and I guess I would invite the naysayers...
Everybody on this call now understands it. We're all on the same page. I'll grant you that.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul.
Well, I just, I want to emphasize, though, Paul, that's a very, it's a very good thing to bring up, but I just want to emphasize the sacrifices that people are making to try to keep the school district operational at the current level. So, you know, if there's naysayers out there, there's, there's a whole lot of people here who are trying to make this work and keep the school district operational at the same level. That's the point. It's about the survival of the school district and what we're trying to do for the kids. So, you know, you can, you can be a naysayer, but you have to look, you have to look at that fact.
Well, you know, like you said, you're preaching to the choir, talking to me, you know?
Oh, I'm preaching to the recording, probably.
All right.
All right, very good. Do we have any other community comments?
I think you have one more question from our union co-president, Shelley Cook.
Okay, go ahead, Shelley.
Hopefully, the final question, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Just wondering, with the COVID and all the closures, I haven't had a chance to look at the new budget yet. So has the cuts been made or have some cuts been made at least in the travel area? With everything pretty much closed down, is it safe to assume that that's one of the areas within our budget that has been at least significantly decreased?
What do you, what specifically, Shelley, do you mean by the travel area?
Um, in all, like in a lot of line items, there is dues, conference, and travel.
Dues, conferences, and travel?
Yes.
Everything vis a vis, and most of them are under professional development lines, and the professional development lines have been level funded from FY20?
So I was looking at school committee, district admin, superintendent, district admin, assistant superintendent, business and finance.
All of those lines have been level funded from FY20. And realize those are lines specifically at the school committee level under that grouping that are, a lot of those are district-wide expenses.
If I could chime in, Shelley, most of those accounts that you're referencing, the, I'd say 95% of that are dues for various associations that we belong to, like NASDAQ and the Mass Association of School Committees, Mass Association of Superintendent, it's all those kind of things. There's very little actual traveling part. There's very little actual traveling part in those, except in the professional development side. The school committee one you referenced, there's probably $500 or $600 hours in there if they have the conference in Hyannis in November. So some of those have stayed, but not much of it. But the majority of that is just association memberships and stuff. It's just a catch-all line for everything related that's not considered supplies or contract expense.
So there's no specific line item pullout for just travel?
No.
We can still, no, this has been pulled out this year?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I mean, the hope, I think, is that we resume to some sense of normalcy next year as opposed to being in this situation again for an entire year. So I guess we have to wait and see.
All right, any further questions? All right, I don't see any further questions. That's, I think that's pretty much it. So moving on, other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting. Does anyone have any further issues? Seeing none, we'll move on. Future agenda items are the updates relative to the Mersey Fiscal Year 21 budget on May 11th. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Sean Nichols and I.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil Desetter, aye.
Vicki Ludwigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.